Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the August 14th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kalo has the big dog for the day.
Nelson today.
Hi there.
Our featured dog this week is a year and a half old male weimaraner. He was found in Sheffield Township off of Alariah Avenue. Nobody's come to claim him yet. I mean, just a beautiful dog, looks like he's well groomed, taken care of. What do you think bud? When's he gonna be available?
This one, I don't have the paperwork, but he should be available in a few days.
Saturday?
At least.
He'll be available Saturday, so I mean, if anyone wants a great dog, I mean, he's just really friendly, little bit of work, you have a friend for a decade. Stop by our counter, how many dogs we have Nelson?
Full house, please.
Full house, please. Stop by, we need to get some of these dogs adopted up. Oh, is he tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Maybe.
I know, he's just tripping, not even want to get over him.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you Commissioner, actually just a brief executive session today, potential hire Golden Acres, an update on ongoing labor negotiations specifically with the United Auto Workers of America over at Job and Family Services, and that should do it. So I would act as a conclusion of our regular board meeting, today we go into executive sessions and we discuss those topics that I've outlined, thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of the County Commissioners meeting minutes of August 5th and 7th?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Amendment Resolution Number 13693 adopted August 7, 2013, increasing the sales and use tax pursuant to revised code 5739.021 and 5741.021 by one half of 1% for a three-year period of time for the purpose of providing additional general revenues for Lorraine County and suspend the collection of inside millage from 1.6 mills to .2 mills for concurrent collection of tax shares 2013, 2014, and 2015 upon the passage of said issue on November 5, 2013 ballot due to transposition error.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Children and Families, approving enter in contract with Ohio Guide Stone Brea in the amount of $28,177 for the provision of community-based programs, excuse me, for prevention of child abuse and/or neglect for fiscal year 14 Children's Trust Fund for Incredible Years Program effective retroactive July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Amendment Resolution 13595 adopted July 3, 2013, approving an enter in various contracts on behalf of Lorraine County Children and Families Council for the provision of community-based programs for the prevention of child abuse and/or neglect. Said amendment is reflect number one, the Nord Center Program, Stewards' Children to be increased from $8,750 to $9,100.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Community Development, award contract to Charles Acres Construction, Inc., Lorraine in the amount of $6,809 that includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders for Francisco and Brenda Rosales at 3654 Albany Avenue Sheffield Township to receive grant assistance from CDVG FY12 home repair to pump, crush, and fill existing septic system and install new sanitary lateral. Twenty-four invitations to bid were sent out, three received, this being the most responsive, complying specifications, and will be paid from the home repair account.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, adopt statement of policy for the prevention, retention, contingency program for job and family effective October 1, 2013 through September 30, 2015 in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 5108.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Advertise for proposals for business, English, and work experience, notice being the journal on August 19 and 26, and open at 2:00 PM on September 3.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorized purchase service agreement with Common Ground Oberlin to provide personal development training classes to OWF recipients in fiscal year 14 effective October 1, 2013 through September 30, 2014 at a cost not to exceed $160,615. Authorized director execute on behalf of the board with prosecutor's approval as to form and amend for changes and increase their content.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, increase the emergency contract with GeoStabilization International of Grand Junction, Colorado from $152,084 to $163,284 for repairs to Columbia West River Road. This was due to a falling slope along the Rocky River and resulted in a permanent lane closure, but since original work, an additional slide required placement of two-foot shot crease shoulder to support edge of roadway for an additional $11,200.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve an enter in construction agreement with CSX Transportation, Inc. for prepared roadway reconstruction on Griswold Wall at CSX Transportation, Inc., mile post BJ 156.18, Alariah Township. Griswold Wall from Leona Street to Lake Avenue will be widened crossing upgrades. Estimated cost including engineer is $451,254, and county has advanced railroad $30,000 with balance due upon issue notice to proceed, and costs is being paid from federal and/or OPWC.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Mr. Cordez, we, as under board correspondence, we received a letter from Pandies Garden Center. Are we going to have any kind of response to that letter that they sent to us, or is that mainly the?
It's on my desk. Actually, I saw Bill Holtzman come in. You may want to ask him about the Pandies situation, which we talked, the Griswold Road, that's...
That might be Bob Cliver, might be better.
Well, maybe Bob's doing it.
Yeah, Bob's been in coordination, because I've been out to see Pandies and Sugar Ridge and, and working along that. So Bob, maybe if you want to give an update, we actually spoke last week at Nowack about it.
Bob Cliver with Lorraine County Engineers Office. Right now, as you're aware, the Pandies right-of-way acquisition is within the, it's been filed for a eminent domain taking, so really all of our correspondence has to go through the prosecutor's office, since this is in the hands of the court right now. So again, our position is we'll work with the prosecutor's office, and if they feel it's appropriate to talk to the Pandies, you know, we obviously will, but right now, it is in the, in the hands of the courts.
Who's, who's conducting the eminent domain?
The prosecutor's office, through the county insurance office.
That'd be Dan Kepke, Attorney General.
Dan Petticore?
Yes, Dan.
So, okay. The, so is it Lorraine County doing the eminent domain, or is the county engineer doing the eminent domain?
No, us, we approved it about a month ago.
Okay, that's what I was just trying to get, so the township's not doing it either, it's just, it's the county, right?
No, it came to the county for that, but they've been in negotiations, I've met with them, now the letter was just stating they want some assurances that where the poles are going to be placed, so they didn't have any egress or ingress problems, were going to be, you know, they want them in writing, the issues aren't going to happen.
The problem is right now, Commissioner, the utility companies are, who actually puts together their plan where they're going to move the poles, because the poles have to be moved, you know, to accommodate the widening. It'd be very difficult for us to say that's going to be 100%, that's where the pole's going to go. Right now, that's where it's planned to go, and there should be no reason it should not go there, but if something comes up, say there's an unknown utility, it has to be moved again, it'd be very difficult for us to say, yes, we guarantee it's going to be in this spot.
And that's why the prosecutor's office is involved.
Yes.
Yeah, it's just taking forever on this project, we're getting the, getting the track and getting all the flooding that was over there at the transmission.
How many years now? As long as I've been here.
We did this, what, 10 years ago, Bill, to start this project?
Yeah, it started in, yeah, 2000.
But actually, right now, we're, we're in very good shape. We did go back to Nowacka last month, Commissioner, to get additional funds, and Nowacka did approve those, so the funding is online. We submitted the plan package to ODOT, and we're waiting for their approval, and our plan is still that we want to bid the project, have construction start January 1, and the construction schedule really was based around Pandies, because there's certain windows that would be best for the road to be closed, to impact their business, you know, the, the least we could.
Correct, I remember those discussions, so I mean, the engineers office has been working with them, like I said, I've been involved with the businesses down there, so we're just at that one point to get finished up, and hopefully we can get something rectified through the prosecutor's office.
But at, but at this time, again, if the prosecutor's office feels it's appropriate for us to respond, we obviously will, but right now, it is in the hands of the court with appropriation.
I ran into one of the Pandies a couple weeks ago, and it was a communication issue, like they weren't, they didn't feel like they were being communicated with on a regular basis, or some, something of that sort, so I don't, don't we have a construction manager out there that was supposed to keep all the businesses?
Not yet, because we, actually, the project has not been sold. It's still really, right now, it's been in the planning stages, the design stages, then obviously was the right-of-way acquisition.
I suggest that I prepare a correspondence on behalf of the board that indicates that the matter is, is with our legal representatives, and at this point, we can't comment, so at least they understand that they, they have received a response.
And once this acquisition goes through, then will be, and you will be in more communication with the business owners?
Actually, our plan was, just like we did with Abbey Road, is like when construction, before construction starts, our plan is to have a public meeting with all the businesses, introduce them to the construction manager that'll be out there every day. At that time, we'll know who the contractor is, and we really have, especially on any of these where there's a, you know, really, a project like that, they're going to get a new neighbor for a whole year, it's going to be the contractor out there, their businesses will be impacted, and the success of that project is going to be, have, you know, constant communication between all those parties during construction.
They've already made access for the backside to go out to the access road around the back.
Right, one of the...
There's a stone out there, I know the township worked on that, I don't know if the stone's been poured yet.
Yeah, the, the road's been cut, and they're actually, that was for Ed Nox with his towing company, because one of his issues, his contract with the city of Alariah that requires him to be on 24-hour call, and obviously, he has to have a, a secure area. We made arrangements, actually with Pandies' help, to access their parcel to the cul-de-sac, so we constructed temporary road that we'll have available for him during construction.
So it's been ongoing, so I have any communications with these guys, week in and week out, so...
And again, my last conversation with the Pandie brothers, they, they did like the schedule we came up, you know, to help accommodate their business. They're, like I said, they had two windows during the year, the, the road's going to impact them, but there's two, 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 several month period during the, the summer and the winter that they could close down, which would be the least impact to their business, and that's how we based our schedule.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
So do you, do you want me to send a letter letting them know, at least they won't feel like they've been ignored?
Right.
And, and we'll direct them to Chris?
Sounds good.
Should they have any additional questions, and he'll give them whatever information he believes is, that he can give.
And they've got ballot concerns, I mean, they're a business of road shutting down and construction, it's going to, you know, it doesn't do well for your business, you have to urge everybody to take alternate routes to get there and shut.
Just keeping them informed of what's going on, too, is part of the solution, too. Thank you.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Accept a report from the engineer on the straw hag ditch, final plans, estimate and assessment, scheduled hearing for October 1st at 9:30.
Do we want to have discussion first with Mr. Holtzman, is there anything we need before we make a motion on the, excuse me, David, let me...
Are you speaking to this, or?
I'm just asking why it's on Tuesday instead of a Wednesday?
It's our special meeting date that we have, that we hold for these days, it was approved in our organizational meeting?
Right.
As Tuesdays for our special meetings.
But that means it won't be when the rest of us are here unless we come. That's, I just...
Yeah, we set those up to have the meeting.
With this thing, we've had a couple of the public meetings associated with your regular meetings.
Yeah, some, but these are very long and drawn out, very full audiences.
Okay.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, the amended report that we submitted was based on a survey that was done of the ditch profile. We had, to the SWAC, had McCartney survey the profile of the ditch, and so the scope of the work went from just a cleaning project that we talked about originally, to a more of a stab, re-establishment of the ditch, it created a profile. So the cost of the project went from initially of $134,000 to currently, it's right, right around $285,000. And so the assessments that we submitted were revised based on that cost, plus we also looked at a different posi, avenue of assessing the cost, more based on the parcel size, the land use, and the soil type, so, so we based it more on just a, rather than just an acreage assessment, it's more based on the use of the property. To give a, a better, because the farm lands with large acres, we're getting the same rate as a place that has, you know, fully paved runoff, so we addressed that in the revised assessment, so when the people get that, it's more based on the actual amount of gallons that we anticipate running off of their property. So that's addressed in the revised assessments that were submitted.
You have a comment, Jim?
Well, remember the last time we did this? Again, this is based upon the, the additional work, it's based upon some of the comments and concerns that were voiced at the meeting. While I didn't walk the complete ditch, I did go down into the country club, and I did go down into the cemetery and take a look at as much of the ditch that was reasonably accessible, excuse me, and there's going to be more, more work done, additional work done, and that's based upon the surveying that was done, that most people asked us to do at that meeting, but I don't think they're going to be too happy about the increased cost, because what's actually occurred here is the costs have gone up, they haven't gone down from, from that work. And that's not including, I don't think that price is including the, the money we paid to have the ditch surveyed either.
I don't believe so, no.
Somewhere along the line, we need to recapture that, too.
What about the redistribution of costs, is that going to be?
Well, you know what, it's a balloon, you poke it over here, and somebody gets hit in the face on the other side.
Right.
So, this, this person just got happy, and this person just got sad, so...
Well, that's what the public asked us to do, those who attended the public hearing, whether one of, we had out the Twin Lakes facility, or the ones we had here, they brought up many issues, they wanted addressed, and we did exactly what they asked.
And we did add, I think there were four parcels that were added to the petition that were not originally included, that were benefiting.
Do we extend it, the scope?
I think what's going to happen is the revised assessments will be now sent out, and so they'll be able to compare their initial assessment letter versus what they're going to, what's proposed currently, so...
Did we lengthen the ditch, though, did we go farther with it?
Um, I don't, I think it was, was it lengthened at all, Wayne, or?
It went into the cemetery, $5,000, boy.
Did you, did you see that old trolley embankment down in Alariah Country Club? There's an old, there used to be a bridge, and there's, there's this, the stone, I don't know what you'd call them in engineering terms, on either side of the creek are still there, and that really adds a choke point going into the country club property before it expands out into those retention pools where they've stepped it, stepped it down on the country club. Have you been back in there to take a look at that?
I have not.
And there's a huge pooling going on behind that, because it's not a natural barrier to the creek, it's an artificial barrier.
We'll definitely take a look at that before the hearing, get some pictures of it, so if it comes up, we'll be...
It's a little bit, getting back there could be, could be challenging, because you just can't go back there, and it's not really on the greens, so you got to get somebody from the maintenance crew to, to drive you back in there, and say, look, I was down there right after some rains, and there was a lot of water being pushed up, up the creek.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if that's, I have no idea whether that hydraulic pressure's backing water further up the creek or not, but, but I do know it's very narrow there, and then it opens, and if you've been down there...
Was that after the waterfalls, after the drops?
It's before.
Oh, before, okay.
It's, it's actually, you go, it'd be on the other side of the road, you can almost see it from the road in the, in the late fall when everything's defoliated, but it's, it's on the other side of the road before it enters those falls on the country club property.
We'll take a look at that for the October hearing.
Do we have a dates after that?
October 1st.
October 1st?
So moved.
Second?
Any further discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
I don't have any other further reports, just wanted to thank you.
Mr. Penaski?
Uh, nothing to report today, and, I don't know, nothing for executive session.
Commissioners report.
Easy week, huh? Well, yesterday, I took a trip over to Family Promise, I, you had gone there?
Yeah.
Couple weeks ago or so, just kind of seeing what they, what they do there, it's a, it's for families who are homeless, and you have to have children in order to go there, and they have 14 people that stay with them at any given time, so anybody that has any clothing, or food, or any kind of things that you would like to donate to them, that would be very much appreciated. They are looking for a new home somewhere here in Alariah, they need at least 2,000 square foot, so if you're, have a, a building that you would like to offer to them, they would greatly appreciate that, too. I watched a webinar yesterday regarding Naco's Discount Dental Program, Jim? It's kind of like the prescription program that we have now, the discounts for prescriptions they now have for dental, so I was wondering if the county was going to pursue offering that to our citizens, or if we were going to be the ones spearheading that, or I think we should go for it, it's a pretty big savings for people that don't have dental insurance, for participating dentists that want to be a part of that.
Take a look at it, if you're interested, you were going to, last time we spoke, you were going to watch the webinar.
I did, I watched it yesterday.
So if you're, if you're excited about that?
Yeah, I am, yeah.
We'll contact Naco, we're, we're a member, and we'll get the, the collaterals and information necessary to get the program out there.
Okay, great, thank you. End of my report.
They didn't, Family Promise didn't have any luck with that building in Alariah they looked at?
No.
I don't know if we took them there?
No, that, the building had a lot of issues.
Okay, I've spoke to Lois to a couple of times, so I didn't know what happened with that.
They're still looking.
The past week, Commissioner Williams and I attended Nowack, we didn't have an executive board, but we did have one long conversation about changing the code of regulations, it did pass, the full board with just two nays, so that will be coming to all of us, because it has to be approved by the five counties and the city of Cleveland on changes. Nothing real substantive, other than in regards to the alternate to participate, that they must be part of a political subdivision within that county, where there was a lot of holes for appointments there, and you could, as I brought up in a couple of meetings, we could have appointed, when we were having the Alariah Road interchange issue, we could have just appointed the Jacobs Group to represent us, someone from Cleveland Clinic to represent us, and someone from Forest City to represent us, all the landowners there, because there was no requirements for an alternate, so that went through pretty well, everyone agreed, Commissioner Williams agreed, too. And also the Corn Fest Parade, great turnout as always, did a very nice job, nice to walk with the North Ridgsville Democrats. And then yesterday, we had our Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District Policy Committee meeting, a lot of discussions, 2013 financials, going to be a lot less than what they were in the past. There was discussion about a collection center in the southern part of the county, working with the city of Oberlin currently, but there's been a, a great need, so the discussions are up there. The consortium is having for this, a waste pickup, the 14 communities is today their pre-bid meeting, so looking to get better pricing. The organics recycling facility, it's been brought up, and all the commissioners have gotten correspondence, that is, request for proposal is out there, that'll be in mid-September on those who want to do an organics, which is yard waste and food waste. It has nothing to do with the sludge that was a major concern in Pittsfield, I think we've all addressed that, Tom and you did address that to that one resident?
Yes.
Okay. And then just discussions on what's happening down at the state in regards to changing how solid waste districts work, it's in a flux, we're hearing some good things, and it may get held off till after next year's election, so hopefully they will leave us alone, and we can continue to do what we're doing. That's the end of my report.
I've spent a lot of time out at the Corn Festival, went up there on Friday after Nowacka, get set up and that, talked to a lot of people, hearing a lot of conversation about the reduction or suspension of the property tax with the sales tax increase, very good input from individuals there, a little, you know, cautious on it, but once I told them that we're asking for the state to put in the ballot, they're welcoming on that, so hopefully the state will agree with us and allow it to go on to the ballot language in November.
I had, can I add to that, though? I spoke to Paul Adams Thursday, Friday, Saturday, he said the way they're doing it now, they've since changed it, since Secretary Houston's been there, long as our prosecutor's office approves the language, they normally don't reject it unless it's something that blatantly doesn't follow the law, so we should be able to get the ballot language that we requested as of last week, so we should know that within 30 days, so they normally don't. In the past, the board of elections would actually run it through legal, they don't In the past, the board of elections would actually run it through legal, they don't anymore, they let our local legal do it.
Okay.
Whatever our prosecutor's office comes up with.
Well, that'd be great, because I think that's going to help a lot of people understand what's going on, what we're doing, and that we can't change it. Once it, once you vote for it, it's there. Monday, went on WEOL to actually talk about the issue, got a good reception there, and then spent the, spent the day in Cleveland yesterday, working with a group that's looking at investing in a project in the city of Lorraine. Lois shocked, actually, by what their payroll was, of fourteen million dollars. It's a bipartisan support, working with some individuals from Calhoga County, hopefully, we'll have more, more on this by next, in December, if everything goes well, they could actually open up in September of next year. So a very good meeting there yesterday. After that, man, went over to Ohio Locomotive Works out in the old Ford plant, interesting company. September of last year, they had six employees, wasn't sure what was going to happen with the business. A gentleman came in, took it over, went up to fifteen employees, they're now talking about going up to twenty-five employees.
Is that that global transport, where the shipping and receiving?
No, this is where they actually take locomotives and they refurbish them.
That used to be IRS, so we actually put them together when they were at the steel plant, then they moved to the Ford plant, that was the deal we did in oh-six or oh-seven.
Right. And, yeah, last year, they were looking at possibly closing, he had a new individual involved, has been able to get some grants, been able to move it forward, doing very well. Actually, I was there yesterday when they were painting a new green locomotive that's going to be on a magazine for the International Trade Show, so they wouldn't let me get in the pic, the picture, but it's a great, great facility, trying to get some state representatives out there as well, to see if they can help them, and, yeah, end of my report.
The Commissioners will not meet next Wednesday, board correspondence.
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to go address the board this morning? Some new faces back there.
Doug Messer's here.
Good morning, Doug, how you doing?
Good morning.
Board with retirement already?
No, you know what, I will.
There you go, all right.
Well, he's walking up, I just want to thank Ms. Moon out on Toledo Avenue and Thirty-Fifth, East Thirty-Fifth and Thirty-Sixth Street. She invited me over for a block party on Saturday night, great event, a good community event, so, thank you, Ms. Moon.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just, I just wanted to, I came by, I was playing golf, because I play golf a lot these days. I was playing golf with some people, and they were talking about, you know, the sales tax, and, you know, it likely, you know, being this and being that, and, and I was explaining the reduction in the, in the property tax, and, and there was, you know, and, and I'm very pleased that, you know, that, A, that it, it appears it would go on the ballot language, because I also believe that, you know, because of the, you know, the biggest issue is the lack of trust in government, and, you know, if it's, if it's in the ballot language, I think that there is a greater likelihood that people would support it, and I know that I will support, you know, I support that as a reduction in my property taxes in favor of a more fair user tax. But I just, I'm just, I, I just wanted to express my, my gratitude that, you know, that things are proceeding in, in a manner that is appropriate. You know, you've addressed, one of the concerns that got brought up was the, the conflict between addressing debt, you know, the, the debt reduction and, and not being able to reduce, you know, beyond what, you know, the inside millage necessary to cover debt, that's been addressed. Every, the, the things that need to be addressed have been, and I just, I guess my hope is[1613.91]